Okay, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, now I call the order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and we'll begin with a few introductory comments. The County Planning Commission will first take action on the consent agenda. After that action has been taken, the county and Hartford Planning Commissions will meet jointly to discuss item one on the agenda. Following item one, the County Planning Commission will continue with the regular agenda items. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight again, please make sure that your cell phone is turned off. Any final action taken on conditional use permit request will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by April 1st at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on April 23rd at 9:15. Any final actions taken on the rezoning and text amendment applications tonight will be referred to the county commission for a public hearing on April 23rd at 9:15 a.m. Meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the February 25th meeting are included as part of the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members to any item listed on the consent agenda? Next, I will read each item. Is that where I'm supposed to go? Okay, next I will read each item on the consent agenda, and if any member of the audience objects to the item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Okay, so item number two is approval of the minutes from February 25th. Item number three is a zoning ordinance text amendment to amend the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. The location is one half mile south of Iverson Crossing intersection. Item number four, conditional use permit to replace an existing mobile home and to transfer one residential building eligibility. And this is located at Buffalo Trading Post. Okay. And we have one more item on the consent agenda, and that's a conditional use permit to transfer one residential building eligibility, and this is located in Corson. Okay, are there any objections to any of those items from the audience? All right, so if there's no objections, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, so all of those items have been approved. Everything I just read has been approved, and so if your item was already talked about, then you're free to leave. All right, now, I'm gonna call this regular joint meeting of the Minnehaha County and Hartford Planning Commissions. The two Planning Commissions work together. Should I read this?
No, just one Planning Commission.
Well, we're just one of us here.
Yes.
Do you want to just report on item number one, we'll just go on. I'm not sure how this works. It's a new territory.
Yes.
It's a little messy. Item one is the preliminary subdivision plan for metal development, which is located adjacent to the city of Hartford, as shown on the map in the red. Hartford City Attorney has determined that Hartford does not need to be here tonight to take action. County Attorney has stated that we need to move for a deferral from staff, and so that's our recommendation on this item tonight, to defer to the April 23rd meeting. Okay, do I have a motion for deferral to April 23rd meeting?
No.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, anybody opposed? All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, we will at some time be seeing this preliminary plan, and if the staff could just give us, at the time we hear it, we do look at preliminary plan, just a reminder again of the scope with which we can critique and change and modify those plans.
Sure.
I dropped my years when I was in the city, and we got into the size of bushes, really very, very detailed, but we don't do it as often as county, and I'm a little foggy, so I think a reminder to us might be helpful so that we don't just rubber stamp or, you know, we really get into it. Thank you.
Glad to do that. Okay, very good. Okay, that item has been deferred to April. And then we have item number six. Ryan? No, Ryan, sorry. Sorry.
Forgot I did not need to be up yet. Ryan couldn't make it tonight, so. This is a request rezoning number 13-001, to rezone property from A1 agricultural to RR residential. Petitioner is Lindsay Baker, Greg Banzi. And the location is approximately 4.5 miles west of Two Falls, and it's intersection seven of Wayne Township, shown as a little red square there on the screen. The petitioner is proposing to rezone 1.99 acres, and the reason for that is that size is that would be under two acres, and thereby only allow one residential structure and not two. The land in this area is zoned A1 agricultural, and there's some RC recreation conservation around some creeks there. There are a number of housing units that are already in existence that you can see in the subdivided land there. Within half a mile of this area, there are 14 single-family dwellings, and within one mile, there are 37 single-family dwellings. Ryan calculated the number of building eligibilities that are also in this area, and found that there are four located to the north, four to the west, and two to the south. So those are eligibilities that have not been used at this time. The petitioner did try to approach the people that had the adjoining land, and none of them were willing at this time to sell the building eligibility to them. They would like to build on this site as it is in Lindsay's family. Her grandfather had owned the land, and so they would like to continue living in the same area as their family has been. While there are a number of rural dwellings in this area, this is not a transition area, which shows where change should occur from agricultural land to urban land use, and so to rezone this to rural residential would be considered a spot zoning in this area. There are no urban services available, and no utilities, and the comprehensive plan maintains the use of density zoning in this part of the county. Staff does not feel that this meets the comprehensive plan, and is recommending denial of the rezoning request. Petitioners aren't here tonight as well.
Okay, is there any questions for Pat? All right, thank you. Is the petitioner here? You want to step up and introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Greg Banzi.
I'm Lindsay Baker.
And as Pat said, back in November, I've been contacting all the neighbors to try to purchase eligibility so we can build their first home out there. And the information they gave me, there's only two to the north, and two, or three to the north and two to the west. And back in November, my first called the planning zoning office, they told me there was an eligibility still left on her grandfather's property. So we got excited and started moving forward with the plans, and then two, three weeks later, her grandpa gets a letter in the mail saying their office messed up, and said there isn't one. So ever since then, I've been, you know, we've been working on trying to get one to build their first home. I think it was 20, 25 years ago, her grandpa told me he dug rural water down to the south fence line of that property for his, for future use, but he never did. And Lindsay grew up out there on that property, and just both liked living in the country and build their first home. If you guys have a floor plan of a house you'd like to build, if it's a good deal, I guess.
Yeah, well, that doesn't really matter to our decision, but I guess it's all like you kind of went forward on some plans that aren't working now yet.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked to all the neighbors that have eligibilities, and they all seemed real nice about it, but the Meyer family, that has the majority of eligibility around that property, Phyllis is the owner, and she isn't doing so well, and I've only talked to her son Gary, and at the time, you know, he didn't want to do anything because her, his mother is vet health, so it was Trevor's last resort.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Greg or Lindsay?
Whereabouts did your grandparents live? On the map there? We see the same thing down below here.
That one just to the north, a little square. Well, that's where.
On the intersection of the road?
Yep, we grew up right there.
Okay.
Yep. We moved out of that house when I was 18, so.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? All right. Oh, you want to? Sure. State your name and address, and go ahead and make your comments.
My name's Greg Hartman. I own the property that's immediately adjoining to the south of the requested development. And really, I guess my only question, me and my wife recently acquired that ground to the south, and in doing so, we're looking at also getting out into the country and getting away from the development we're currently in. And I guess my concern is going forward, if this is granted, then what does that mean, you know, for some of the other eligibilities that could also be granted in then? I guess just looking at my ground, you know, we own around 16 acres down there. Now, does that mean that we also will be able to, you know, get further eligibilities in the future? Because as Two Falls expands out in that direction, I think that that ground will become worth more money, so. Just know where we sit, because I think we're gonna break ground in about a month, so how to position our house and whatnot.
Anybody else? All right.
Well, this is what we, I absolutely agree with the staff on this. This is not only spot zoning, it's what we call generating eligibility, whether it is not. And once again, that sets a really bad precedence for us to deal with in the future. We should grant this. I'd vote for denial as stated.
Okay, we have a motion for denial?
Second.
And a second? Any additional comments? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that rezoning is done. Item number seven, let's take a step.
Subject property is located on the north side of South Dakota, Highway 42, one-third mile east of intersection South Dakota, Highway 11 and Highway 42. The property is currently zoned A1 agricultural and has been used as a nursery and landscape business. Many of you probably know it as Preheim landscaping out there. The land surrounding the property, as well as the property, is all zoned A1 agricultural. This request is to rezone the property from A1 agricultural to the I-1 light industrial district for the purpose of sale. The current buildings, as I stated, have previously been used for the storage of materials and equipment for the nursery and landscaping businesses. Currently, however, the A1, they wish to sell these as a commercial property, as commercial buildings. Therefore, the A1 agricultural district won't provide very many commercial uses that could be approved besides a nursery or landscaping business out there. Looking at what we have for plans in the county, on November 22nd, 2011, Minnehaha County Commission adopted the Red Rock Corridor Plan, for which this area is located in. According to that future land use map of the Red Rock Corridor, this property is represented as agricultural use, which the property is already currently zoned. The plan does call out for commercial uses at the Iverson Crossing intersection, or at the intersection of the two highways over here. But it does not call out, it calls out for commercial in those areas, but does not call out for light industrial in those areas. Extending beyond what the plan has called out for commercial or commercial uses in the area would provide a spot zoning, which could further lead to strip development along the highway, which is what the corridor plan was trying to address and prevent when it was adopted. Staff believes that the request to rezone the property from A1 agricultural to I-1 light industrial is inconsistent with the corridor plan, and therefore is recommending denial of rezoning 13-002. This is just a zoomed-in view of the property. As you can see, let me zoom out currently. So currently, this is owned by Preheim, as well as this area here. This is where they grow their trees. There's about 11 acres I believe over here. And then there's two lots here on which the buildings are located on, and that's what's requested for rezoning, approximately seven acres here. So that we zoom into these seven acres, you can see the existing facilities. They do have a nice, you know, landscaping here that, you know, kind of buffers the buildings from the highway. There are, you know, two large buildings on the property. They use back here for storage of different aggregates or sand, and things that they use for the landscaping business, as well as underneath the hoop barn that's here, as well as some plant growth that's on the west side of the building. This is looking at the current zoning map for the corridor, and just zooming into our area here. As you can see, currently, the property is zoned ag, the surrounding property is zoned ag. Over here is where the vet bank is on the intersection of the two highways, so that's what's zoned commercial here. And this property down here is PD, but it is currently zoned for commercial uses down there. The next map here, this is the Red Rock Corridor Future Land Use Map, so this is the plan that I was referring to, zooming into the area. As you can see, at the intersection, we have called out commercial uses, which do, you know, extend a little bit onto the Preheim property where the trees were growing, but the subject property does expand beyond what was called out. And by expanding, you know, this far out, then we will lead to, you know, more of a strip development along, that could potentially fill in to be a strip development along here. Just quick pictures of the buildings that are out there, just to give you an idea of what the buildings look like. Just big metal pole buildings. They do have, I believe this building has some offices in it, and some, you know, restroom facilities, but the main per, biggest purpose for the buildings currently is just the storage of their equipment and their supplies for the nursery and the landscaping business. This is looking to the west from the driveway. You can see their sign there, just to look along Highway 42. This is looking to the east. They do have a 40-foot driveway entrance here, so there's plenty of room to get in and out on that. Just another view of the buildings with the hoop arms in the back. Let's see, and this is back behind. You can see that they have their stored sand and aggregate underneath the hoop barn, and just back behind the buildings. So if there's any questions for me at this time, I can answer those. A representative for the property is here today to speak on behalf of the petitioner.
Any questions?
Dustin, now with respect to the amount of time you guys spent in the Red Rock Corridor, because that was quite a project. When you were viewing this, though, I mean, whenever you go by there, it looks commercial, it always has. So was that something you just kind of got overlooked in the process? Or was it more the concern of the strip mall thing?
It's more the concern of, when we went through this plan, we called out, and unfortunately, I don't have this map here, but we called out basically four focus areas along the corridor to concentrate that development into, and the focus areas were, you know, this intersection up here around 26th Street. The other one was Iverson Crossing Intersection. Rowena was the focus area, and then what we considered the gateway down here at the state border was the other focus area. And we used those focus areas to kind of concentrate commercial or light industrial district or uses. In this case, when we looked at the, this focus area for Iverson Crossing, this is, you know, how we did expand, I think the focus area did expand out this far, but we didn't believe that the commercial uses should expand out that far, even though, you know, it is a commercial use that was there, but it is allowed under the ag district. And so that's kind of why we didn't want to expand, you know, too far out here, because then we'd have to do it down here, and then it's almost, well, here's another intersection, why not expand it, you know? And then basically, you're creating a strip all the way across a half-mile stretch there, or a mile stretch.
I guess I would just, I could picture a trailer manufacturing this place instead of that little pieces on. That's kind of what, you know, since you're here.
That's probably what they, a kind of a facility they probably should be operating out.
Any other questions?
So were the Prehimes invited to the Red Rock Corridor? What was their input on this stuff?
I'm not sure if the Prehimes attended any of those meetings. We did, when we first started this project, a notice went out to every property owner in the corridor, and numerous notices were sent out to them, as well as published in the papers and everything about these, about the Red Rock Corridor Plan throughout the year and a half, two years we worked on it, so. They were noticed of the project, and at that time, we did not hear anything from the Prehimes at that time.
I agree that the property looks, you know, pretty commercial. I mean, what could you do there for agriculture, except maybe dry tobacco or something? You know, could it be a dairy barn? I don't know. It's not very, you know, you're not going to plant corn there.
Dustin, I'm looking, but my understanding is that a nursery is allowed in A1 ag, but then they've got some retail sales and those types of things going there. Is what is being conducted there considered grandfathered in, or is it permitted use, or can you explain to me?
Well, I think it's, I think over time, it's kind of reached the fine line between what it initially was, was just a nursery, and it, you know, kind of, you know, a landscaping business with probably no retail sales on site. I, you know, as for whether they're having retail sales on site now, I guess I can't speak to that. But they have, you know, I think grown to a point to where they are probably maxing out what's allowed in the ag district currently.
But my understanding is this is before, it's not because you guys, from an enforcement standpoint, where you think they're approaching the line as to whether or not they're approved in ag, it's that they desire to sell it and would like to be able to have more potential buyers, and thereby increase the value of the investment that they've made in this property and probably amortize over a period of years.
Yes, so they wish to sell these buildings as commercial buildings, which unless you're running a nursery, or maybe a few of the commercial uses that, you know, seed sales or something is allowed under the ag district that could operate out of this building, you know, there are a few that, you know, are ag commercial uses that are allowed under the ag district, but not as many as could be under a commercial or a light industrial zoning.
Another question. So the area to the west that they're currently growing trees on and stuff, that's would be dealt with separately by the sellers, et cetera?
Yeah, when we were first in the discussions, you know, they did think about rezoning the entire 17 acres to light industrial. I think that, I think our discussions at that time was kind of, that's gonna be a hard thing to do in that area, because frankly, the plan didn't call out light industrial anywhere in the area. I mean, I guess it calls commercial out in the area, but not light industrial uses. So what the focus was, was to just focus on those buildings, because, you know, where the trees are planted, that could be used as, you know, a tree farm like it currently is, or it could be put back into ag ground, so.
Any additional questions for Dustin? All right, thank you. The petitioner is here.
Good evening. Dr. Rockhouse, vendor of commercial real estate, Two Falls, South Dakota, agent for the petitioner. Justin, Dustin did a great job of identifying what's there today and what our ultimate goal is. We were asked by the Prehimes about three months ago to take a look at their property and considered possibly putting on market to sell it for them. Mr. Preheim was challenged with some health issues and wanted to slow down and ask if we'd take a look and see if there's an opportunity to sell his property. Listed a property, and within a matter of a few days, Mr. Preheim passed away. So now we're dealing with Mrs. Preheim, and she's asked us to continue on with the possibility of essentially maximizing the market that she can present her property to, and hopefully it can get sold. We took a look at what was there, went down and met with the people at the county. They were a great help. They pointed out the Red Rock Corridor, and at the beginning, when the Red Rock Corridor was presented, I went to some of those meetings. I live out in that area, so I'm fairly familiar with the Red Rock Corridor. What we took a look at is, what I just hit at the, down there? Okay. What we took a look at is how the property is currently being used, not how it's zoned today, but how it's being used. If you take a look at the, at the drawing, it's identified as a red, and in the red, the red indicates commercial or industrial use. So it's currently being used for a commercial or an industrial use. And I'd like to go back to your slides. Can I do that? Can you get back to your slides a little ways? But let's not stop at that particular, that slide's fine. Couple things that you'll notice on this slide is that at the intersection of the two highways, currently, there is a veterinary clinic that sits on the property, and to the south, where the big red block is, to the south, that is currently a rubble pit, and a lot of your building material, buildings that are being raised, and concrete debris is being hauled into that particular area. Eventually, that area will be hopefully filled in, and they'll convert that over to some sort of commercial development on that corner. If you go to the east a little ways, southeast of the Preheim property, there is an extremely large mining operation going on, with the mining of the pink quartzite rock. And to the, to the east of that a little bit further, you have Schitt's, Barr, whatever they call it now, and next to that is a trailer manufacturing facility. So there is a somewhat mixed use. On this particular slide, it shows the commercial, having gone over a couple lots from the corner. We're not asking to rezone the tree farm, the area to the, to the west of the piece that we're looking at today. Let's go back to my slides for a second. Okay, as I said, currently, it shows as being used for commercial slash industrial. On this particular slide, it talks about the uses for the Red Rock Corridor and light industrial that identifies, well, let's go at the top, commercial. It says that commercial are those uses that will be along the major roadways. And so, once again, the Preheim property is located along one of those major roadways. One of the first things that we addressed when we first took a look at this property, met with the DOT to find out what the DOT's thoughts and concerns were, and they were okay with the driveway that's there. Their preference was not to be expanding that driveway, and with as large of area of driveway as there today, I think we're fine. And in the light industrial says it's intended to provide high amenity industrial development along, along the major roads. Once again, we're along the major roads, and adjacent to, this is interesting, and adjacent to residential areas while allowing for slight ever use if you go back inside it. So once again, we're located along the major roadways there. We are not asking in any way, shape, or form to approach an I-2 zone. I-2 zoning like the, the way the property is being used, not the way it's zoned, but the way it's being used across the road with a quarry. I-2 would be heavy industrial type uses, the smoke stacks and all that kind of stuff. We don't have natural gas, and we don't have water as far as rural water to this property. Because of the rock that's in that area, there are, natural gas and rural water's not available. So this is fed by a well, and it's hooked to propane. So as far as doing large-scale industrial-type manufacturing, those type of things, we don't have the utility capability to conduct that. This is a slide that shows, as you've seen before, the future land use. This is a slide that shows, as you've seen before, the future land use. And in this particular one, our property shows up as a white block, is being, going back to agricultural. I can't see this property going back to being used as agricultural. This is probably the most telling slide that I have this evening. It shows the Iverson Crossing area, if you want to call that. It came out of the Red Rock book here, and it shows that that's their focal area. And if you read what it says about those focal areas, what the Iverson Crossing, it says that this area consists of an intersection of two major highways, Highway 42 and Highway, which the Minnehaw County Comprehensive Plan establishes as a desired location for commercial and industrial developments. Came out of their paperwork. So we feel that we're in the right location. Currently, there's already a lot of buffering out in front. And by changing this to industrial zoning would allow us to expand the potential who we could sell the property to. You will, if we do change it to industrial and an industrial user comes in before you, you once again will have the opportunity to address conditional use permits. So those items such as screening, buffering, along those lines, would be addressed at those times. I want to bring, I need to go back to your slides for just for a second. Okay, now I'll go back. Now, in this slide, you'll see how there's already a large buffer area out in front of the property. And there's a row of trees that are planted along the eastern, the southern edge of the property. Towards the east, you'll see several rows of trees and a lot of equipment parked back in that area. That's the county's road equipment that's being stored there. And the hoop building you saw behind the building with the salt in it, that's county equipment and that type of. So this property's being, I think it's being leased to those type of people, so. I'm open for questions.
I just want a clarification, because you keep saying that Dustin showed your property as being commercial, but I see it as agricultural on the map. Dustin, can you clarify that?
Yeah, what we did, and the map he showed was a map of existing land uses. When we did the corridor study, we did, and it's in the corridor plan, under existing uses. We went and surveyed all the current properties. And because it is an ag slash landscaping business, we considered it as commercial, you know, as the current use. Because, you know, if it was ag seed sales, we would consider still as a commercial use. But it's zoned and agricultural. And so the maps, the other maps he was showing, that were showing that it was white, that was actually our current zoning map, which, because it is zoned agricultural.
All right. All right. Very thanks. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Brockhouse?
Yes, Mr. Brockhouse, are you listing the business as well as the land, or do the Prehimes intend to retain the business and locate someplace else and just sell this property?
The initial intent was for the Prehimes to sell this property and move a small part of that business probably down towards Canton. And the business will no longer exist in this area. They would probably, according to Kurt, now, once again, he's passed away. What was to maintain ownership of the trees in that tree farm. Now, we're not, once again, that's not part of this discussion, but to continue that. So the business itself, it will be going away.
Okay, so it's not a sale of the business where you would hope that you find someone that would continue to run the operation in that location?
That'd be nice, but that's a pretty limited buy pool. It's not our problem.
I know.
Saying if they did that and they kept the tree farm part, what is the access to that tree farm part? Is the only access to it through that commercial or through the business?
Excellent question, Mark. Actually, today, on the plot, it shows a private easement that comes in through the driveway, goes between the buildings, and meanders out that back driveway. If we get this rezoned and what the first thing, we've already had a discussion with, with sayers to come in and put together a better access type of easement that would run right along the, the concrete in front, so you wouldn't have people driving through the property that go along the front that would access it. The Asson family still owns all of the frontage from this property going to the west. They still own the old railroad strip of land. So there isn't, that, that piece of where the tree farm is today is not accessible from the highway.
Any other questions for Mr. Brockhouse?
Just one, please. She said the county is renting that out currently, part of it?
That's my belief, is that's where they keep their trucks that they use for maintaining Highway 42. That's where they keep their salt in, those type of things.
The county or the state?
Not the county. It would have to be state.
It's a state, okay, the state. Those state guys.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? All right. Motion, discussion?
I have a question, I guess, for Steph. Are there any building eligibilities on this?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, this is one of those hard ones. Obviously, it looks commercial, but it's owned ag. And also, since he mentioned that they have some zone of land along the tracks, guess what, Sam's going to come in here and want to have that zoned right out there for a strip mall. You can just see that coming. If you zone this commercial, that would be my only comment.
Do we have a motion? Further discussion?
At the same time, it does not look like an agricultural operation. I mean, unless you were, you know, selling seed or maybe an implement dealership or something like that. It looks, you know, like a storage facility or something.
Part of me wonders, how does that get developed on its own agriculture like that? Was that all approved?
Well, it was, it was built as a nursery. And so, you know, they still, they still have equipment and stuff they use for that nursery, which was what the buildings were for, to store that.
So all those buildings have been approved as part of an agricultural operation?
Yeah, yeah, as part of the conditional use permit that they had.
Yeah, and it required that you have onsite sales, I mean, you have growth area to do this type of business. They couldn't have just put these buildings out here and, you know, ordered in plants like Hy-Vee or Lewis does and sold them. They had to have an area of growth.
The tree farm was part of the operation.
The tree farm is required to have it be allowed as an ag use.
I believe, too, I can remember when they put this out, part of their deal was they were also cleaning parking lots and stuff.
Yes, they were. Phil Capon spent a lot of time doing enforcement on this property.
That's what I thought. For. I, you know, the ink's not even dry on our, on our corridor plan. And if we go from a potentially commercially zoned on that map, we skip. We have ag between this and what we're being asked to take action on. We're going from ag to I-1, which doesn't have the same screening requirements and everything. I think Mr. Brockhouse is mistaken. I'm sitting here, if you leave that up, red doesn't say commercial or industrial, it says commercial. Yet the request is for industrial. I think that it's premature to rezonance. There may be a little bit of an enforcement issue with the current zoning. But I don't think we're in the business of being concerned terribly about whether he's got numerous buyers or not. Another business, if you choose to run a business in a less costly location, the two things you got to think about when you run a business is, what's it cost to start, and how do I get out of it? When I want to sell it? And now we're being asked to help him get out of it. I move to deny based on it being inconsistent with the Red Rock Corridor plan.
Can I say that?
Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I'll say no.
All right, rezoning has been denied.
I would say that it reminds me a little bit about a guy that builds a $500,000 house and then can't find a buyer. If you can't afford a $500,000 house, you want to build your own. You don't want to build that funny-looking thing.
Any other old business?
Yeah, I was going to inform you that we were told of an impending lawsuit last week on the Eastern Farmers Co-op Agronomy Building up at Colton, Martha Colton, so.
They were pressed for it?
I believe that's who it is, yes. So.
At the gun club, I thought that got appealed and coming to the tune, I didn't hear anything about this.
It was appealed, but then they had needed a continuation, because both parties, the date of last Tuesday didn't work for either party tonight.
I just wondered why we.
April 9th.
They haven't sealed themselves right into more regulations.
They haven't sent us enough rude emails, Matt.
The gun club is sending rude emails? Oh, somebody's sending rude emails regarding the gun club, okay.
And then, also in their old business, I wasn't here last Tuesday, I was on vacation. But I think Mike was at the meeting and discussed, or can maybe tell Phil you on what action the county commission took on the rezoning for the plan development.
And basically, it has, I think we all got emails on it.
Yeah.
I thought what Jeff did was the right thing, was to delay it until they got their action together. It's worked together. Kind of sidebar to that, like I say, I've been talking to a lot of people since then, and doing a little thinking of my own, and I, you know, I think one of the requirements we're, we're not going to take out the sanitary sewer requirement. Well, if you do a little cut and paste with their plan, if you were, if they would look up to the sanitary sewer district, they could take the money they're investing in this sewer system, give half of the city of Hartford to get that line out there, and they would have another half of it available to do the improvements that are going to be required, like sidewalks. Whether they believe that or not, that's going to happen from a safety perspective. And when you do that, there's room for three more units on that property without affecting the aesthetics of the development. It's all about sound property and we'll get in.
They can put a TIF in and pay for all those.
I wouldn't vote for a TIF, I can tell you that right now.
Well, all I'm just saying is that if they could do that, get the infrastructure built.
Are we going to be allowed to talk about sidewalks from now?
Yeah, with the preliminary plan.
I understood we cannot talk about the width of the roads, that's been determined, so that's a non-issue.
That's right, that was determined in the plan development.
So I agree with you, I didn't know either.
You mentioned that required wider streets at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they could have, but right now, there's a whole legal discussion, and I don't feel comfortable going into it without person.
Because I was going to raise my hand when you said Hartford requires 37-foot paved street. Now, I'm thinking 16, 16 is 32, 18 and a half, 18 and a half is 37. They could be 18 and a half foot wide, and you could actually pass a car that's parked on the street without driving in dirt.
I don't think we need to talk about things that we have no say in.
But that was it.
Well, if it's, if the zoning organ says it, you cannot change that. That's, that's the requirements of the district. That's, it stands at this point. Unless we have some legal ruling elsewhere, but.
So as a plan, it's going to be as a plan development?
Plan development.
And because when the plan development was approved, the streetlets were part of it, we can't go back and revise it without an amendment to plan development?
Correct.
Can we propose an amendment to a plan development, though, as a planning commission?
We can't.
I suppose anybody could, I don't know. You'd probably get your own lawsuit.
It might be a concession that they would make in return for something else, like water.
Well, anyway, that's the action the planning commission, or the county commission took last Tuesday.
That Eastern Farmers thing, does that delay the development of that?
Certainly.
How long will that take?
Well, it's hard to say.
So this party is not, is not appealing, they are actually suing.
They're appealing the county commission's decision, so they, they appeal to Circuit Court, so they are in essence suing the county.
Does that actually take months or years?
At least months, potentially years.
It actually says they are aggrieved by the decision of the Minnehaw County Commission.
Commission.
So when we approved that gravel pit by Goose RV Sales there, by Hartford there, that went all the way to Supreme.
Yeah, and that took at least a year and a half.
Really? You know, of all the gravel pits in this county, that is the neatest.
Yeah, it's nice.
Immaculate gravel, and there's actually an asphalt plant in it. You don't even know it. That's really been impressive, what they've done.
They gave Roland Roy's, I think, ten years to extract the aggregate, and it lasted two years. We probably will restore it or did, I don't know. But they lost a couple of years of their lease on that to fight in court. It went all the way to the Supreme Court, they lost, and then the Goose RV people said, "Well, it'd be okay if we moved the hall about a quarter mile to the north."
But we didn't move it, because that would have changed the whole CUP. But with the, with the lawsuit, or, I mean, they're not, we'll just wait to see. It just all depends on when they, what hearing date set.
It's interesting, just the Farm Service who, well, can I base all the business on that?
On that plan development, you know, they haven't even talked to the Sioux Valley Energy by us, our engineers. They didn't even talk to them.
Are they required?
The one, yeah, well, they're taking some power to them. And like they said, you know, these streets, you know, yeah, you can put the, you can put the lines in and stuff, but 30, 40 years from now, when you got to come back in and replace, and you got to dig up everybody's yard, who's going to be, you know?
Where are these ones, in other words?
Yes, yeah.
That was one of Teresa Seidel's points she brought up, was where utilities are located.
It just seems like we're being asked to hurry through that way too much.
Well, it just looks to me like someone wants to do something on this.
I will say on record that once something is filed by state law for the planning commission, you have 65 days to act.
We just act, but as deferral, not action?
No, I don't think so. If you don't act, it becomes law as it is given, so.
So next meeting?
Next meeting, we, we need to hear it, and I think we'll have a lot more answers by that time.
Well, I hope they keep working with people on it.
I see them. Every other day.
Both sides are not happy, so it's, it's hard to work with people that you're unhappy with. But that's what we, big people have to do.
In turn?
Pull the gentleman.
Okay.